Alright, I'd like to adjourn the Board of Education closed session at 7 o'clock and reconvene the Board of Education open session, also at 7 o'clock. All the board members with the exception of Chris Rich, who is suffering through painful surgery right now at the Dodger game. And all staff members are present. And today, the pledge will be led by the Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School. So if Principal Mr. Jeff Zamparepa can introduce his students, that'd be great.
Good evening. Thank you President Wong, Board of Education, Monrovia Unified Cabinet. Welcome, everybody. I have two awesome Cougar scholars who would like to come up here and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We have a 6th grader, this is Isabel Gomez, affectionately known as Izzy, and we have Ryan Weir, a 7th grader with us.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Gomez and Ms. Weir would like to say just a few quick words about what they've been up to this fall at Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School. We'll start with Izzy.
Hello, my name is Isabel Gomez. I'm 11 years old and in the 6th grade. This is my first year at Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School, and I've been enjoying my experience a lot so far. There are many great things about the school, from the teachers and the staff, to the great coding program it offers. The best part is that I had a chance to be part of that new coding program. Coding is a fun, interactive learning process when you can create games and cool stuff on a website called Scratch. In class, we work on blueprints and finding out what the users would like out of a game. Coding can be very helpful in the future for college or even getting a job. It's a very helpful resource in life. I would like to thank the Board of Education, my parents, and Dr. Z for this opportunity. Go Cougars and Dodgers!
Hi, I'm Ryan Weir. I am part of one of the Cougar Robotics Team's Alpha. One thing I love about Cougar Robotics is it provides a way of engineering and design when you're building and planning how to make the robots and programming. Another great thing about robotics is documenting. I am one of the members of the Engineering Notebook, and I document what we're doing for the day's meeting on Thursdays and Saturdays, as well as taking pictures of what's happening to prove what we've done, as well as building. Another great thing about robotics is it helps me with something I'm terrible at, which is public speaking, but also community outreach. We're going to Plymouth on Friday to showcase our robots to the elementary students during the chunker treat, so we can encourage them to join one of our teams once they get into middle school. The final thing that I love about robotics is the teamwork that it provides. When you're at one of the meetings, you get to be with friends and help each other when trying to come up with ideas for robots that we're going to be building and programming and just planning, and you also get to eat snacks and have fun. Thank you.
Thank you, girls, and I'd like to just recognize we have the Gomez and Weir family with us this evening too. So glad to have them here, and I think we'll take a quick picture and give some recognition to the girls.
It's great hearing how things are going at the new school. Item four, report on the closed session held of this date. We had a discussion regarding the superintendent's evaluation, and no decisions were made. Do we have any changes to the order of business?
We do not.
I'd like to go to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of October the 11th.
Second.
Do we have any questions? No? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board President Wong?
I'll abstain.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you. Board recognitions, the Board of Education wishes to congratulate the following students on being accepted into the National Merit Scholarship Program, which honors exceptional American youth and encourages them in achieving their goals and aspirations. This year's students exhibited exceptional performance in the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Dr. Throsen?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Principal McGinnis to go to the podium and help introduce these extraordinary students who are in the top, let's say 1% and 2% of their cohort group, and let's just say that approximately 1.6 million juniors take the PSAT every year, and these students have emerged as outstanding, and I'm proud to be able to recognize them today.
That's absolutely correct, Dr. Throsen. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to introduce some wonderful Wildcats. Good evening, President Wong, board members, cabinet, community. Thank you all for being here to celebrate this momentous occasion of these outstanding Wildcats. We have five students here and their families out of our eight winners, or those of them who we want to commend. Let me begin first by introducing to you our National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalist, and as you noted, this places him in the top 1% in the entire nation based on his scores. Out of a total of 1520, he scored a 1500. So that's pretty impressive. So please help me congratulate Mr. Nathan Nakamura. We also have a number of commended students. This year, we had five students that reached the commended bracket, and these students place in the top 34,000 students in the entire nation. This is the largest group that we've had in my tenure here at Monrovia High School. Three of those are with us tonight. Please help me welcome Ms. Ishika Muchal. Correction, there are two of them this evening. And then also this year, we have three students that were recognized for scoring in the top 2.5% in the nation of the National Hispanic, as part of the National Hispanic Recognition Program. So these students joining us tonight are Rebecca De La O. And Gabriel Luhon. Not able to make it this evening are two other commended students, Ms. Alexander Feldman and Max Young, and Valerie Flores, who also was a National Hispanic Recognized student. So I will take on behalf of them their certificates and deliver them to them tomorrow at school. So, once again, you are commended, you are a star in all of our eyes. You bring to Monrovia High School a sense of pride and inspiration for other students. This year, all of our juniors took the PSAT test. We offer that as a service to all of our students at Monrovia High School, and so next year, I anticipate being here yet once again to recognize another group of outstanding scholars. This places this young group of educated individuals at the precipice of some outstanding opportunities after Monrovia High School. I wish you all the best of luck, and know that on behalf of the whole Wildcat family, your family's here tonight, we're all very proud of you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations to Ms. Luhon.
They're doing pretty well, no training needed.
Are we good, Ed?
Yep.
Well, you know, he's been in trouble lately.
You have the report? Okay.
Mr. Wong, your tape recorder can stop.
Thanks, Mr. Russell. Always a pleasure, always a pleasure hearing from you. Item two, the Board of Education would like to recognize Susan Hirsch for her continued commitment to ensuring the health and well-being of students in the Monrovia Unified School Districts in her recent presentation on wellness programs to Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. Dr. Throsen?
Thank you. I will step to the podium and ask Ms. Hirsch to join me there. When one of your own arises to the very top and is asked by state and federal elected representatives to present on a topic where they've distinguished themselves with not only theory but practice and real results, you've really made it. And Susan Hirsch has met that highest echelon, having also just recently presented in a Mental Health and Wellness Institute hosted by Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. She consistently allows Monrovia Unified students and community to receive the very best care thanks to her passion, her resourcefulness, and her tireless work ethic.
by our own Dr. Throsen.
So on behalf of a grateful board, thank you, Susan. Thank you, Board President Wong.
You have to stand in the middle of just...
On behalf of Amy Gonzalez, who wishes she had been here, but is probably also studying
They got your back.
Just make sure Brian's head is not on top of her head.
and not watching a game. She is excited to report that Canyon Oaks and Mountain Park Schools just finished the first all ride of the year. The semi-annual riding assessment prepares students for state testing in the spring. This time around, the document-based question was why did Japan bomb Pearl Harbor? Over the course of three days, students analyzed primary sources to determine the main factors for the conflict. They had the opportunity to persuade other students to embrace their points of view before writing their essays. Our staff spent most of the day grading the essays, knowing that the data gathered from this assessment will drive their teaching over the next term. They had several field trips and incentives this month for students, including the Young African American Male Youth Conference at Pasadena City College. Students who attended received free tickets from the Los Angeles Clippers to watch a preseason game at Staples Center. PCC also hosted the annual Adelante Young Men Conference for our male Latino students. All those who attended were granted admission by the LA Galaxy to see their last regular season match. Students who attended these field trips were not only rewarded for taking time out of their weekend to further their education, they networked with professionals and educators in multiple industries who provided motivation, mentorship, and encouragement to students looking to embark on life-changing college and/or career pathways.
Thank you, Amy. Dr. Throsen, do you have a report?
I do, President Wong. I'd like to note a couple of items. First, we are in the midst of Red Ribbon Week, where we have multiple activities at each of our schools, reminding students to make good decisions and that their future is key. In addition, we participate in the Great California Shakeout, and we do this on a yearly basis. And here you see the different events that occurred at some of our schools, making sure that we are safe and we were prepared for, as best prepared as possible, for this kind of natural disaster. In addition, and I'm going to ask Ms. Wu to help me present and explain this, we were recognized for our work in water savings and in conservation of water, and Ms. Wu attended representing the Monrovia Unified School District. And I have here multiple certificates and plaques from elected officials, state and federal. Ms. Wu, would you care to elaborate?
Yes, I would. Welcome to do that. Monrovia Unified School received this award because of our effort to save the water, the water conservation, and in the area of the gardening, the boys' restroom use of water. And with this award, we are along with the other district in the San Gabriel Valley, including the Amandi Union High, Bassett, West Covina, Amandi School District, and five of us participated in this 2017 Water Fest Festival, what is on the Saturday of October 14th. It's a great experience, and the celebration is well done, and I networked a lot of people in the business and shared the tips how they can keep and conserve their waters.
Thank you, Vanna. Item number six, we've got a whole stack here, so we can display these afterwards. Public comments for items not on the agenda, Ms. Huff?
There are none.
Do we have any public comments for items on the open session agenda?
There are none.
Thank you. Then we will move on to informational reports. The Jiangsu Teacher Summer Training Program, Ms. Wu?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, Board, and the district participated Jiangsu Teacher Summer Training Program, and we have three teachers, and their first time went to China to share their expertise in the classroom management. And tonight, I will have these three teachers, Monica, Christine, and Kim, come to Board to share their experience.
Hello, President Wong and the rest of the board. Thank you so much for allowing us to share our experience. It's just a short PowerPoint to tell you what we did over there. If we can go on the first one. Oh, I do it? Thank you. Okay. So, program overview. We spent two weeks teaching English and teaching strategies to English teachers in Jiangsu Province in China. We flew into Nanjing or Shanghai, and then we, from there, we had a brief meeting with all the teachers. There was about 200 teachers that went from all around the world to this area, and then we were all dispersed to different parts of the Jiangsu Province. Specifically, us three, we went to Taizhou, which is a small province, they told us, and it was 1.4 million people that lived there. And we got to tour Nanjing before we left to our small area, and then we were able to go and experience Taizhou for the two weeks. Okay? Thank you. Here's my experience. At the top, part of the things that we did, we were teaching English, so of course, neither of us speak Chinese, so it was a full immersion English program for them. They are all English teachers that we taught, and we used skits, reading in English for them, writing, and working in small groups to help them practice their English while we were there for the two weeks. We presented lessons, and we taught the full day, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. daily. And the top one is a skit that we were doing. The bottom one was our last day, where we had, the bottom right, they all brought food for us and celebrated dinner with us as our last day there. And then in the top left, as you can see, I do not know how to take selfies, but that's my students in the top left, and my eye. And then the other two pictures are activities that we were doing during teaching the lessons throughout our days there.
My colleagues here taught elementary age and young children. The teachers that I taught were teaching middle school. And I had 21 students. I was the only one that had males in the class. I had three or four males in the class. And it was a very interesting experience. We, as we talked about it more and more and more, it was enlightening to see that we were learning so many new things ourselves about the way other countries teach English. For example, I brought up knowing the alphabet and singing the ABC song, and that's when I realized that they don't teach the ABCs, so they didn't actually know the order of the ABCs. They know how to read and write, excellent reading and writing, but not the ABC and the orders that we're used to. So we did many activities, as Christina said, and this is a three-minute speed interview that they were doing right in the top picture. Small group work, they loved it. They loved talking to each other, and just like our students, when you walk around the groups and you tell them, "Speak English," you know, because they wanted to speak in Chinese. This is a whole picture of my group, who still keep in touch with me. Occasionally, they still have a question, and they connect with me through WeChat, and it's an amazing experience. I think one of the most enjoyable lessons that we did was one of the early ones, and this was getting to know each other through food, and that was actually part of the curriculum. And we bought a couple of items that were American traditional items. I brought beef jerky and packaged oatmeal. It was easy to travel, and they loved the jerky. But then it was their turn to bring things, so we had to try things that we never thought we would eat. I think Ms. Christina ate duck's feet. Yeah. But it was wonderful. We loved it, and still to think about it, we laugh and just, you know, have that experience close to our heart.
Excuse me? Duck feet?
Yeah. It was actually like in a freeze-dried package or something, and they opened the package up and gave me the duck foot and made me taste it. It was very spicy, the way it was made, and you just kind of chew on it. It was very interesting. They offered me duck head, but I said, "No, thank you."
Monica, when you say the alphabet, not ABCD, how do they have it, just all scrambled on the board?
We didn't go into how they learned to read and write. I'm imagining it's more by sight reading and writing, sight words. They often use their dictionaries, but it seems like when we were talking about the alphabet, they didn't know exactly what order these letters were supposed to go in. They know the sounds, and they know everything else, but not the actual order of the American alphabet.
It's interesting. Thank you.
And being the teacher that I am, I bought an alphabet book while I was there for little kids, and it was just jumbled. Alright, so my experience, up in the top is my class. That's pretty much all of us. At the bottom, you can see they really wanted to learn about techniques that we use in the United States. So we did Venn diagrams, different types of mind maps, graffiti strategy, so writing and rotating, different kinds of interactive things, standing up, moving, different games to play in the classroom to practice English. It was all very different for them. They were very much about pencil, paper, sit at your desk, you're not going to get up during the class session. So for them, it was a little bit different. So you can see in the bottom corner, they're playing a card game to get them speaking and just talking with each other. Above that, they're working on a group project to do a skit, and under the group picture, they are, we did an activity called blobs and lines, just to start getting them moving and thinking and walking around. And just like our students, when you walk around the groups and you tell them, "Speak English", you know, because they wanted to speak in Chinese. I, this is a whole picture of my group who still keep in touch with me. Occasionally, they still have a question and they connect with me through WeChat. And it's an amazing experience. I think one of the most enjoyable lessons that we did was one of the early ones. And this was getting to know each other through food. And that was actually part of the curriculum. And we bought a couple of items that were American traditional items. I brought beef jerky and packaged oatmeal. It was easy to travel. And they loved the jerky. But then it was their turn to bring things. So, we had to try things that we never thought we would eat. I think Ms. Christina ate duck's feet. Yeah. But it was wonderful. We loved it. And still to think about it, we laugh and just, you know, have that experience close to our heart.
Excuse me? Duck feet?
Yeah. It was actually like in a freeze-dried package or something. And they opened the package up and gave me the duck foot and made me taste it. It was very spicy, the way it was made, and you just kind of chew on it. It was, it was very interesting. They offered me duck head, but I said, "No, thank you."
And Monica, when you say the alphabet, not ABCD, how do they have it? Just all scrambled on the board?
We didn't go into how they, they learn to read and write. I'm imagining it's more by sight, reading and writing sight words. They often use their dictionaries. But it seems like when we were learning, when we were talking about the alphabet, they didn't know exactly what order these letters were supposed to go in. They know the sounds and they know everything else, but not the actual order of the American alphabet.
That's interesting.
And being the teacher that I am, I bought an alphabet book while I was there for little kids and it was just jumbled. All right. So, my experience, up in the top is my class. That's pretty much all of us. At the bottom, you can see they really wanted to learn about techniques that we use in the United States. So, we did Venn diagrams, different types of mind maps, graffiti strategy. So, writing and rotating, different kinds of interactive things, standing up, moving, different games to play in the classroom to practice English. It was all very different for them. They were very much about pencil, paper, sit at your desk, you're not going to get up during the class session. So, for them, it was a little bit different. So, you can see in the bottom corner, they're playing a card game to get them speaking and just talking with each other. Above that, they're working on a group project to do a skit. And under the group picture, they are, we did an activity called blobs and lines just to start getting them moving and thinking and walking around. And they really seemed to enjoy that one. I think when I asked at the end, what was their favorite technique? That was one of their favorite because it was so different for them. We were also very amazed by the school lunches they provided. And they told us, these are actually what the kids get. It's all fresh, prepared, everyday, five different items with soup and a fruit. So, they were delicious. We wanted to share that with you. Oh, yeah. It's a two-hour lunch and we get a nap. So, that was our favorite part. We also added some, you know, pictures of us sightseeing because when you go to China, you got to sightsee. So, this was around Taizhou. We saw the old town, we went to mall. Some of the students took us out to the mall and to dinner. So, that's up at the top. Is that right? And Christina loved these little cars. We want to get her one. Shanghai, we saw the big city. Christina and Monica went to Disneyland. In Nanjing, this is where we all met, the whole group 200 teachers. They took us on some tours. We hiked 392 steps in ridiculous humidity and rain. And that was, that was the bottom picture on the right. We saw some of the old places, the Confucius Temple. And that's what that is. Both, both pictures are Confucius Temple. And we took a weekend trip to Beijing. We took a sleeper car and just slept overnight and woke up in Beijing. We went to the Great Wall of China and hiked that. And it is a really long hike. We saw Tiananmen Square and the Forbidden City.
I guess I'm closing. We just want to thank the Board and everybody that made this opportunity possible for us. Never in our wildest dreams did we think we would be able to, one, get selected and, two, actually get permission from our husbands to go. But it was an amazing experience. We just told Connie that we were in shock the first day that we got there and we met all the other teachers. We were the only ones that applied and got selected. And we were only responsible for our flight. But everybody else paid over $2,000 just to go. So, this was an opportunity that we hope Monrovia gets to have again and other teachers get to be a part of it. So, thank you on behalf of all of us.
So, I assume if, if you had the opportunity to speak to other teachers within the district and if they had the opportunity, it's something that you would recommend?
Absolutely. And we were princesses. We were pampered and...
Oh, yeah. They took very good care of us.
Yes. And Kim was a celebrity.
They took pictures of us everywhere we went. And they followed us around grocery stores, taking our pictures. And it was a lot of fun. We had, we had a great time. And just being able to talk to other teachers, they experience a lot of the same things we do here. And we got to talk about, you know, the similarities as teachers in general. And it goes across the world. So, it was a really great experience.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you for representing us so well.
Connie, thank you for helping setting that up.
It really is an extraordinary opportunity to see how educators work in other countries. And, you know, we're all educator nerds. We want to share practices and strategies. And it's great when, when it just travels over space like that.
Item two, distance learning virtual academy. Mr. Furtig and I'm going to guess Entourage?
Yeah, we kind of got a team in different ways there. Good evening, Board President Wong, members of the Board, Superintendent and Cabinet members. We're grateful for the opportunity to be able to talk about something that, man, it feels like years ago, almost as long ago as the Dodgers last won the World Series, that we conceived this. We talked for a long time about it. But when we, we're looking last year specifically at some of the declining enrollment in this surrounding area. And we, we all value very much the Monrovia Unified School District and the programs that it has to offer. And we thought, what's a way that we can, can open this up and get more people to come in and participate with the great things that we do? So, we started looking at our Mountain Park program, which, as you guys are all well aware, is an independent study program. We've had certain online offerings in the past. We've created some of them. We've bought some of them. And we thought, you know, we can really put this together in a different way and market it and, and really bring a quality education to the students who, who choose to take it this way. And also, of course, offer the wonderful opportunities to be part of the Monrovia Unified School District that this also brings. There are three objectives that we wanted to cover tonight that we hope give you the opportunity to understand a little bit about what, what's driving us at this point. What we've done is we, when we opened this up, we found quite a bit bigger world than we thought. And so, for starters, it's easy to describe things. But very quickly, what we'd like to do is give you an actual opportunity to look at a virtual lesson, very briefly, to kind of get an idea of what we're designing and how a student would interact with it. And this is by no means going to be every single lesson, but this is an opportunity for you to kind of look and see how it goes. And so, Mr. Holman has taken a lot of time to, for example, put this lesson together. And so, he's kind of going to take it from here. And I've got the PowerPoint clickers. You can actually go to the microphone to take questions and show kind of how this lesson works.
All right. So, one of the big challenges in doing online education, I'm actually doing some online classes right now, so I have a little bit of experience with this, is getting consistent and regular interaction with students. And in providing them with direct instruction and other means of being able to convey information that is effective, but is, they're also able, able to interact with. So, one of the technologies that is available to us, here is...
Greece has an important role in the development of Western history during its contributions in both philosophy and government structure. As we look at the various societies and structures of ancient Greece, we will gain a better understanding of the philosophical foundations of the West. Throughout Greek...
Can minimize some of the time that it, it takes doing this lesson with students. Takes about 60, 70 minutes. With a narration, it covers about 20 minutes. But one of the key features with this, or one of the things that is most beneficial, is the ability to have the students actually interact with it. As it goes through the lecture, students can preview them before. But it gives them things that they should be looking for, both from the audio as well as from the text of what they're seeing. And then in their response, they have the ability to, to comment on it. And they can do this through text. They can do it through video recording, through voice recording. They can answer, they can call in, doing a phone call as a means of being able to interact with the teacher. They can then post a response. The teacher can respond to them. They can respond to one another through the various commenting options down here. And if they would like to and they have something that they would like to contribute to or add to the class, they can upload a comment, including, you know, a video that they've made, some type of picture that they have, some type of essay that they have, anything that they want to contribute as a, as a response to the information that they're, or the lecture that they're participating in. This is something that can be done live in real time or it is something that can be posted and made available for them to interact with later on.
So, a couple of things that came up as we were looking at this. And Daniel mentioned one, interaction with students is key. And we all know about online programs where there's zero student interaction. Many of them, we've purchased and gone through. And there's some decent curriculum there and some things that do cover topics. But what we're going for eventually is something different, something where the students and the teachers are able to communicate back and forth. And as Daniel showed you, this allows for the students to ask questions at any interval during the lecture. It allows them to post things. It allows them to, in five different ways, was it five or four? Five different ways communicate, whether it's by phone, whether it's by text, FaceTime. If you need to teach math, for example, FaceTime would be better because you could actually show as you're working through it. Our teachers have prep periods and they have periods where they work in the Mountain Park lab. But it would be during those times, the teachers would be able to respond to the students' questions and hopefully be able to schedule the appointments. So, if you can get the PowerPoint back up. Any questions so far, looking at that lesson plan and how, how a student would interact with it?
A couple, really quick.
Go ahead.
This is for existing students only?
Existing...
Students that are already within Mountain Park?
It'd be for any, we would, any student. We would certainly hope that we grow Mountain Park through these processes and opportunities, yes.
And it's available to students today?
That lesson is and certain aspects are. But no, we're not, to be honest, Brian, I mean, sorry, Board President Wong, we're not quite ready to open it up today. But there are many aspects of this are ready. And we do have some, some operations that Mr. Russell will talk about that'll kind of give, I think, the Board and everybody an understanding of how this is going to roll out and when, when it will be operational fully.
So, if a student opts to take that particular course...
Okay.
And you have students existing within the school who are taking it?
Sure.
Does the number of students that that teacher can support greater or less than a normal class?
I'd say slightly greater.
Slightly greater?
We haven't lived this yet, but from our experience that we are having right now, I'll be honest, it took you how long to develop just this lesson?
Right in the narration, about four hours.
So, just this lesson was about four hours of prep. Now, this lesson now exists in virtual reality and will not need to be completely reproduced, just sort of massaged each year to, to fit the needs. But it, it takes a while. And the, the reasons that we'll be successful is because we have a tremendous staff that is very well-trained and capable. But it will, it will require some, some extra elbow grease, best way to put it.
And these classes, is there a cost associated with them? Do we do a one-time fee? Do we own them? Do we license them per student?
Mr. Holman hasn't charged me yet for it. I, I think that it's, the things that we're creating, like always, if it's created during school time, it belongs to the school district. If it's created in their own time, it belongs to the teachers. But we have every intention of sharing every resource that we have with the students of the Monrovia Unified School District who choose to partake in this curricular pathway.
So, at this point in time, the idea is that there's, the cost is minimal?
Minimal, absolutely. That, that was, that was, as we began to create this, with that in mind, to the cost being minimal and to bring in extra students, which, of course, bring extra resources with them to make this worth our time.
That's, that's it for me on this section.
Mr. Holman, have you given that lesson to your own students?
I have a one history class this term.
And do you intend to?
We have a fifth, we have a class after.
Yeah.
One more quick question. Are all of these classes that we're going to be given, especially of the ones that we are creating, they are reviewed by somebody to make sure they're E through G if it's appropriate?
Absolutely. We haven't put anything forward yet. We're creating this behind the scenes. As the classes are created, they'll be put forth. Many parts of the classes already exist. If you take a look at the curriculum that we have now, a lot of it we can do and put online and then not have to reapprove the course, but simply reapprove the delivery, so to speak. And we've done that with Mountain Park and Canyon Oaks. Many of those courses are identical side by side. The delivery is different. With the completely virtual courses, the honest truth is, there probably will be some things that we need to get reapproved. And as we look and see those, we definitely will do so. We do that fairly regularly at Canyon Oaks and Mountain Park anyway because of the creativity of, of our staff, to be honest. There's a lot of times, and Mr. Russell is many times at late night putting stuff on to the U.C. doorways and getting it approved. And if you look through the course descriptions here at the district, I think he's written a good number of them, so.
Okay.
There are three objectives, as I said, we want to make sure that, that the Board understands and that the Cabinet really understands is to allow us to move forward from here. We want you to understand that the factors driving the creation of this curriculum, to understand the differences in delivery mode. What is virtual versus online versus a hybrid model, which is many times what we've had in the past at Mountain Park? And for you to receive the status update of the timeline going forward. And for those, I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Russell.
Is this my clicker? You can use it. Good evening, President Wong and the Board and Cabinet. And thank you for the opportunity to present on this. And I look forward to your questions. But I, so I don't want to spend too much time on this and leave you enough time to have some questions. In terms of the three things that Mr. Furtig mentioned that he wanted you to understand, number one is the factor driving the online, the creation of the online curriculum. We didn't have a chance, we did not want to get into the weeds in terms of providing you data from SAT, our SAT scores and our S-Back scores. But the one thing that we feel very strongly about is how the curriculum from Mountain Park has been able to translate into student success. So, we wanted to make sure that the curriculum was addressing standards and that it was the curriculum that we were having success with. Because our S-Back scores, our, our English was, this, this past year was, in 2016, I'm sorry, 2017, we had 73% proficient for our English. So, there's a lot of good things that are in the, the Mountain Park curriculum. Also, the, the district has spent a lot of time and energy and effort with curriculum adoptions. And the online vendors that are out there do not have ERWC units, do not have DBQ units, do not have HMH units. And so, Mountain Park is pieced together with a lot of different curriculum options that we have been able to benefit, to use because of our, the relationship with the district. The district has given us a lot of things that we use in the curriculum and it's been very beneficial for student performance. So, we wanted to, we're using some online things, using some online platforms, using some online classes. But we're also wanting to make sure that we're utilizing the tools that we've been given by the district. Those instructional tools have led us to a lot of success. So, we want to make sure that those are included. So, the one thing I wanted the Board to understand, there's three different delivery modes, if you will. There's a virtual, on-campus, and a hybrid model. So, Dr. Kaiser and I have had a number of conversations. The minute you get across the line in Arizona is a big billboard that says, you know, Arizona Virtual School. You can go online and find the California Virtual Academy. So, this is not a new mode of delivery. But we envision the importance of providing a virtual academy for students that are farther away than Dworty or Pasadena. We want to make sure that the footprint for reaching out to enrollment is far enough, is far away. And in order to do that, we're going to have to have some very, very, the class is going to need to be virtual classes. In terms of on-campus, so, so a virtual class is something that can be almost exclusively done online. We're going to have to have exams, cumulative assessments done in a way that's proctored, possibly on-campus. On-campus would be, if a course is a CTE course, you're just not, for the most part, going to be able to do a CTE course virtually. Although we do have some options that we have submitted through some vendors. But to do any of the pathways...
CTE being?
I'm sorry, career technical education, thank you.
Automotive, construction, CNA, medical...
Medical assisting pharmacy tech. So, those, those pathways that we have at the adult school would not be, they're just not possible to do on a daily basis. There, there are some options that, some vendors have some A through G approved, one semester career technical education courses. We have submitted those for U.C. approval. And we would be able to give those in a virtual world for those students. But CTE is a difficult arena. The other thing is to, to offer hybrid courses. Even COBA, the California Virtual Academy, has hybrid courses. So, the way that they do their labs is that you have to come on campus to do a lab. So, with biology, it's all done virtually. But when you need to do a lab, you come on campus to do labs. Same with their performing arts, you have to go on campus. They're just not going to let you do a performing arts class virtually. So, even a virtual academy still has campus, a campus that students must come to in order to get those A through G courses completed by the student.
When you say a campus, meaning our campus or any campus that we approve?
Well, for COB, I think they have a couple of different places. But for us, it would be on our campus. So, as we... So as we reach, the goal here is to have the farthest reach possible outside of Monrovia to try to draw enrollment to us. You know, the thought was, our freshman and sophomore year at Mountain Park is where we're at, our lowest enrollment. To get a freshman into virtual classes, would, they would not need to be on campus except to take exams, so that we could try to get them into the virtual world and increase enrollment there. And then by the time they're doing biology, their sophomore year, they would know that they would need to be coming to campus maybe, it's still maybe once or twice a week, just depends on how the course is set up. But I think that biology, virtual biology right now is set up with about five labs that, that they would have to come on campus, which would be about every other week. So, you know, there's going to be some element of a hybrid, which is, the majority of it's done virtually, but the labs and exams would have to be done in a proctored environment or an on-campus environment. Now, if things were wildly successful, you know, maybe there's a testing center, but I mean, that's just, you know, that's down the line. There needs to be something, in order for it to have integrity, you'd want to make sure that you've got students taking exams where people are watching what they're doing. So that's kind of the thought process here. The thought was to have as much of the early classes virtual and then on-campus for CTE. And there's also an on-campus option for students that are struggling. And then finally, as a hybrid, to, to get students, once they've, you know, bought into the academy, that they would come for labs, come for art, and if they needed to come for more support, they would do that. So for example, chemistry is not really something that, we've had one or two students that could really handle showing up once a week for chemistry. That's, it's just an unusual person that can come in and go, yeah, I got this and I'll, I'll see you in a week. But that was, but it was also not online to the extent that we're, what we're creating. So the thought would be hopefully that we could get there. So we're looking for a term to start with classes. And I, you know, I know we're, that still might be a little, a little aggressive. It seems like every time I have a date, it moves, but we're, we're hoping. The marketing efforts are ready and we're ready to get out with mass emails, Eventbrite, and then all our online efforts. Run information sessions in November and December. Get our course outline submitted to you, to the board for any virtual classes, anything that's, that's, that needs to be changed, and then try to roll it out. Our term two is January 15th. So we're just a little under three months from here and we believe that we would, we would have enough to roll out by then and cut the ribbon.
You want to come back up and? Just, just one quick thing, because, and this is the funny thing, and you know, we have a great dynamic at the alternative programs, we work very well together, but if you were to ask John today to give you certain details and ask me in a different room to give you certain details, you may get different details. And it's not because we haven't worked this through, it's because we kind of have different visions and we're arriving different places. What I think is important to go forward with, with this, is that this isn't going to be perfect as it rolls out. And that's hard, it's especially hard for him, because he will sit there and hammer things until they are perfect. But what we are trying to do is get this rolled out to be the instrument to bring people into the district to take advantage of the Monrovia programs. And as we have opened up Pandora's Box, literally, we've realized this is a lot of work. And we're grateful to the staff members who have made the efforts to make this work, but it's not going to be a perfectly polished stone for a little while. But I promise, as we get going, it will become that. It's just one of those things where I think it's frustrating because we looked at it, we looked at online offerings that are there. If you were to take, for example, Odysseyware, which we have a license for at our adult ed, it's a great system, but right now, you could Google any Odysseyware test and a kid could go side by side and every answer to that test is there. People have written essays for the essay questions, Novanet, Apex, they're all that way. So we have to take parts of what there, if we were to roll that out tomorrow, we could take parts of it, we would still have to have what John talked about, it, proctored tests, live labs, things where we're still kind of working out the nuances. What is beautiful about it is the staff, to a person, has been willing to put in the extra time and explore this and nobody has any negative attitude at all. And the reason that I think is so special is, you know, we didn't have to do this. There's nothing that really the school had to gain from this except extra work, but the staff is so dedicated to this community and to the ideals and principles of a solid education and bringing more students to, to that positive, wonderful thing that we know as Monrovia Unified School District, that they're putting those efforts in and I think in the end, this is going to be a really good program.
Time for more questions?
Anytime.
So, so if I, so if I understood you correctly, one of the goals is not to have any canned software, right? Or software that's already existing that could be readily.
Our goal is to use resources that are there, maybe for starters, but to make sure that we put our imprint on it. If you were to go through certain online software, they may say they're, they're aligned to the standards, but the truth is, we can poke holes in that pretty easily and very quickly. We have had, we've not had the success we've had in our alternative programs because we cut corners. The power standards, there's important things that need to be there. We need to make sure that the right, we're teaching the right stuff, the right way, and students are getting it. And because this is brand new, we don't have a lot of data to back us up, but we want to keep those tools that we have. Putting DBQ online is not that hard. And we have Mr. Holman, he's working on that right now. So that tool that we've used at our site that has brought us so much success can be incorporated to the curriculum. We could take, for example, an English section that's on an online already existing software, incorporate DBQ, incorporate some ERWC units that are also online, and then in a hybrid type way, bring them in for certain maybe writing assignments or we can actually work with them, and we could roll that out. And that's probably what this is going to look like in January when it rolls out. But that doesn't mean that by March, we won't have tweaked it and improved it. And we really hope to do that. We hope to take it and, and improve it as we go. And that's really what I kind of want everybody, some people have asked, what does this look like? And the answer is, it looks like this today, but we are trying to make it better.
So, so when you say we're looking at a term to start.
Some of that may, some of, some of that may mean some Odysseyware in order to get there.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that I understand what that means. So if I'm in Hemet and your marketing program reaches me, starting in January, I can take all of the classes that I should be taking. We offer, I imagine we have to put together some sort of curriculum for that particular person? Do you evaluate what classes they need? How, how many choices of classes do they have? Is it kind of like, if you go into this program, here's what your thing is, you're taking these five classes this semester or quarter, this is what you're taking?
That, that problem isn't so unique as you might think, because we're already scheduling students who have very interesting challenges at Canyon Oaks and Mountain Park. We have kids who arrive who are juniors who have no credits, or kids who come from other countries, we have to train. So we're used to creating and working around some of that. But I think if your question is, will we have a full complement of courses ready to meet the students who we are marketing to as a district, the answer will be yes. We will not roll it out until that school is complete. And Mr. Russell's projection, I share that, that I think by second term, our staff will have a very workable and admirable product out there.
And you're looking to target freshmen?
We're not going to discriminate by grade, no. We're looking to target students who can benefit from our programs.
The one issue in, in the example that you're using with Hemet, with their distance, it, we would be a little bit constrained, but we would make sure that there would be a full complement of courses. And we would definitely open it up from nine through 12.
Okay, so it's basically nine through 12. Now, are each of these classes like a normal high school class, or is it like an independent study you can power through in two weeks if, if possible? I mean, what is the general feel? What's the?
The courses are designed, the courses are designed, we're in a term system. So if you remember back, there used to be a four by four block. We're basically a three by three block. So you take three year-long courses in a term, and a term would be the length of a normal semester. And very rarely have we seen somebody come in and go, yeah, I'm just going to plow through this. Typically, they need the nine-week semester to get through the semester and they need the entire 18-week term to get through a year's worth of standard and materials. And that, that's the way the courses are designed, is to finish a year, you do three by three, three courses and three courses. We found that works best for our student, they, if you, if you do six courses a year long, they, they end up, what they end up doing is just focusing on three classes anyway and let the other three go, and then they're behind. So we just, you know, the, we've designed the classes to where they're accelerated as it is. So to go any faster than that is, very few students are really able to do it. It's possible.
But that's not the goal?
No, no. The goal is if you do six classes, 60 credits, you're on your way, right? And, you know, a average schedule would be six courses first two years, and then figure out what we do the next two years. It'd be five and five, so six, six, five, five. And then hopefully, they use the time. We, we highly motivate students to go to community college and start earning transferable courses. I'm not, this is only my own personal opinion, I'm not a huge fan of AP courses. My thing is, go take a college course. Why, you know, every time a test came up, my daughter got strep throat. She did horribly, my oldest daughter did horrible on her APs and, and SATs because every, high-pressure testing, she just folded. So why not just go take the course? And, you know, and then you're not waiting to see what your AP scores, and if you don't, you got a three, you don't have any college credit. You put all that energy and effort in, why not just go take a college course? Heather Mercico graduated from Mountain Park with 30 college units that were transferable. That's another benefit to this.
That's definitely a part of the goal we're working on. Would you say at your facility that you have the technical infrastructure to handle what you need to have all of these online courses, to have a full complement of classes and teachers?
Some days, some days, there are times, and I think that we're all aware, Charles has been working on our internet and we've had some bandwidth issues and things, but for the most part, it's working. There, there, there is a large use of bandwidth and at our site and facility, we would have to make sure that that's handleable, because we're going to have not just, you know, the students in the classrooms working, using the internet in a lot of their courses, but we're going to have online students working with teachers during their prep period and we're going to need to be streaming videos back and forth and Skyping and such. So we're, we're looking at some tools. We were looking at some tools that we would use, the core staff would use, that may help us, different data plans or things that may help us kind of sidestep that. We have a kind of a Plan B if it doesn't work, that should work as well, that we could explain, but it would take a while.
And you have the appropriate hardware that you need as well?
Yes, we feel our hardware's okay. It's, it was just the other stuff that's working. We have a great selection right now. We just got our brand-new card of Chromebooks, those are working fine.
So I just want to make sure that the understanding is correct. So since these are all California students, our funding from this is going to come from ADA?
That is, that's the plan, absolutely.
And that the overall cost, as you're envisioning it right now, is going to be approximately the same, less than, greater than what it takes for you to?
Well, I think it just depends on how, how fast it grows, you know, the hope is that, and how much it grows, but right now, we could withstand obviously some growth and so there, you know, we just would have to look at the, the point where, the tipping point where it would be a wonderful position to be in where you need another FTE, right?
Do you have to have a minimum number of students for this to work? For example, if we just had two students, how are, how is that going to be staffed? Are you going to have to have eight teachers?
No, no. Our regular teachers are going to handle this, I would say, up to the next 30, 35 students. So we would need to grow an FTE number of students in order to hire an FTE. And we're perfectly staffed now to be able to handle that, we're good. We would not need, need anything.
So existing staff would be handling the online, I'm just going to.
Yes, they've been, they've been working on it, they're expecting it, and they will handle it. We're fine.
And we've set the lab up to where people have Mountain Park assignments as a, as a teacher. So they would just be, that, you know, that, that's been, I mean, they've been doing these assignments. Now they would just be doing them in a virtual way, just a different delivery model, because the curriculum's been there, the, the work that they've been doing is, is there, it's just been in drive, it's just been very sort of antiquated. Everything's up in drive and that's how it's been done.
Now, for, for the labs, are you, are you or have you partnered with the high school? Or is this all going to be within your campus and your staff only?
Yeah, Ms. Denai is, and I know, you know, our, our science teacher, she's a rock star and has been one of the, actually, very much in the vanguard of working with LMS systems, learning management systems in order to, to get curriculum up there and teaching her, she's piloting what she's created in biology with her class. So the importance of what her role is that she's, she's talked about how we need to, would need to schedule labs. How a student that starts at a course would need to follow along and then get onto campus when she's doing her lab. So she's, we've had conversations about that, so she's aware in terms of structuring the course such that a student would be following along virtually and then would come onto campus for that lab that, with that unit. That's the way, that's the way it's being structured right now. You know, if it were to blow up, you know, then we would have to sort of figure out what, what the next move, that would be a quality problem.
The last question that I have for now is, between now and your kickoff date, what actually has to occur? What, what is stopping you from saying, I'm going to start tomorrow? What has to be done?
We, if I could start, we have a full staff that needs to, to, some of our staff members are onboard, fully understand the complicated systems. When John mentioned LMS, that's a learning management system, and that's what kind of hosts our school. We started down one road and then about halfway through pulled the reins, went back, started down another road, about halfway through went, we were better off on the other road. And, and part of that is getting our staff to understand where we were, seeing how they work with it, their comfort level with Google Drive versus Neo or Google Classroom versus Neo, those are different ones that we've explored. So that was part of what kind of held us back, because we really did start down one path and then we thought, ah, this really isn't the best. And so we started down another path. Another thing is we have certain teachers who aren't as technologically savvy as, say, Mr. Holman here. And so there is still some people who can get a little bit of this, but then they're going to need to play a bigger part. And so we're kind of filling them in. And we don't always know exactly where their levels are. It's not like, you know, a student's writing level, we can see the data. So as we work with a teacher, we can realize, hmm, we might need to sit you down and help you understand a few more tools. And so that sort of slowed us. But the big thing is, is that we feel like there is enough to start and because we're starting small, we should be just fine. We're not going to stumble. When you say, what do we need? We, we have the tools and the people and the district has given us everything we need to do this. There's a talent, there's a lot of talent on that staff and they're ready.
If I can jump in, there's, there's courses that, that we're, we could, that we're still pulling from various sources, various resources to pull the course together. So we're, we're working on a course catalog so that we're clear as to what's virtual, what's hybrid, what's on campus, so that we're really clear in what our offerings are and what the pathway is for a student to, to get to 220 credits. And then another big piece of what we need is to market this. You know, we really want to get, you know, the efforts, and I, I hope we're going to end with a video, I'm not sure if Charles was able to cue, to cue that up, but we, we want, we've got a wonderful, everybody remember Marta Waller, I hope, from the OJ trial? So she is, is the narrator for this video and we are, this is just one thing for, for marketing purposes and we were, maybe hopefully have you take a look at about, about a minute and 10 seconds. So another big piece of what we need is to market this and get people to enroll.
So the marketing has not started yet?
They're ready, they're just, it's like this, right?
Word of mouth has started. There's a lot of people that know we're doing this and are asking questions, so we're excited by that.
We just wanted to get the process okay.
Ed? Two questions.
Ed, two questions. First question has to do with our security of our system. For allowing people to sign in from who God knows where, I mean, totally unsecured servers everywhere, how are we making sure that we don't provide a vulnerability to our system?
That's a great question. So by, by using Neo, which is their learning management system, everything's in that system? Or by using Odysseyware, or, so we're using external systems? The only systems that student, our students would be utilizing would be email, which is what any student that's in the, in the district would use. So everything else is on another platform that is not related to any online system with the district. So they would not have access to, to anything other than perhaps Ares for grades, if we were to continue with online Ares. Nothing, nothing that is, so the security system is there, and everything else is, is, I believe, HTTPS, so secured.
This may be looking a little too far forward, and I'm excited about where you're at, and I know, you know, we're not, not ready for this question yet, but I just wanna put it out there. As you're developing this, as you're thinking about next steps, can we look at what would, what this might mean for, there's a market for foreign students that want a US diploma. And one of the, one of the barriers to that is they can only come to the United States for one year under a visa. So can they work from wherever, China or wherever, for three years, and come for one year, and finish their, I mean, is, is, do you believe that might be in the realm of possibility?
That's a possibility, and I'll be honest, Ed, I don't even wanna...
You're not ready there, I know.
And I would love to answer it some way, day down the road. It had, we'd be lying if we said it hadn't crossed our mind.
Okay.
We've definitely thought that through. That's, as we look at the online management systems and that work in the United States, but not necessarily in other countries, there's a lot more to explore there, to where we, I would feel probably that we probably can't answer that to any level where it would, where we could go move forward on it. Let us, I think once we're established, and we're getting kids in California moving through this, we're definitely going to explore that, I hope. Well, I'm sorry, we would explore that if the cabinet and board directed us to do so. But we, at this point, I think what we wanna do is, is get our feet on the ground solidly with the program, and then we'll explore from there.
Absolutely, that's why I prefaced it the way I did. It's not, I know you're not ready for this now, but if, just wondered if that might have crossed your mind, especially the one-year limit that we've had, huh?
Yep, absolutely.
Ms. Hammond?
Just one comment. First of all, I have a lot of faith and confidence of the different programming that happens over at Canyon Oaks, Mountain Park, and the whole facility, and the, and the team that you guys have built and put together as far as taking care of our students. So when you come up with a fresh new idea, it's always received very well because of your past successes. So I have really no concern that you will solve all your issues on the startup. Just one I want, and I have a lot of experience in the online environment, and so what you're describing to me is not foreign at all. In fact, and so, but there is one question that we have that, you know, it was not in the environment that I was. And one is, we have a lot of students that have special needs, and are we compliant in taking care of students that have special needs? Because this will become very, very attractive to students who may not be able to have access to, and mobility to get to campuses.
Always, with, with certain special needs, you have to go on a student-by-student basis. Most IEPs that I have seen, in my professional experience, have made it so that a student could not work with an independent study. But there are certain IEPs that where they can work fine, for example, if a student's in a wheelchair, or is a paraplegic, or a student, even if a student is deaf, or blind in certain cases, we could offer online curriculum that may reach them and would do a good job. It would just depend on the student, whatever their learning disability or physical handicap is, we'd have to take a look at this. We have, as Mr. Russell mentioned, four-eight into this in the past, with students who were on bedrest, we had a pregnant girl who was on bedrest, who pretty much had to work virtually at different times. There was a student who I think moved out past Lan, not Lancaster, yeah, Lancaster once, that we worked with, with a lot of online type things. Yeah, she got a college degree and just graduated, well pointed out. And so we, she was a success story through Canyon Oaks and Mountain Park. But what I'd like, what we'd like to see is us to be able to reach as many students as possible. We don't wanna close doors. What we wanna be very careful about is to make sure we don't put the district in any legal harms way, where we say we can offer something, and then if we don't, we're on the hook fiscally or legally for that. So with independent study, it's usually encouraged that you don't adopt anything that's in an IEP or anything where you could not meet that need. And independent study is what it is. Online, virtual means you're working by yourself a lot of the time. Even though we've enveloped, like Mr. Holman showed, opportunities to interact, that still gives us a tough, a tough road to hoe, because we wanna make sure that we're giving every student the best opportunity to succeed. And this is for students who work mostly independently.
Thank you very much. This was very enlightening, and...
See a minute of this?
Oh, oh, please, please.
This is the eighth inning? No, I'm just kidding.
Mountain Park was a perfect fit for Alexis Sutherland, a successful working actor, a gifted student who graduated two years early, all while living with juvenile arthritis, an often debilitating chronic illness that frequently prevented her from attending traditional classes.
You had to get pulled out of class all the time, and you're always missing something, or missing a test, or something important, and then to make it up later was just as hard. So the fact that I didn't have to worry about any of that was really ideal.
We create an individual plan for each student. Because of our flexible schedules, and the way our staff and our online, as well as our, our independent study programs are there, we're able to take and create something that fits for each student.
Individual study and online learning don't lead to isolation. In fact, students become more integrated into the high school community.
Mountain Park really hits a home run here. Because they're part of the Monrovia Unified School District, our students are able to interact with the high school programs as well. All Mountain Park students are also able to take part in any programs that are through the Monrovia Unified School District, through Monrovia High School. So if you wanna be a cheerleader, if you wanted to be on the football team, if you wanted to run track, be in drama, band, choir, all those programs, robotics is a great program we have here. Many of our Mountain Park students are able to cross over and do that.
To me, the best moments are when the kid...
Nice video. So we're really excited about that. We've got the learning pa, the landing page, we've got the ability to crank out hundreds of thousands of emails that are targeted to students from other sources. Anytime somebody goes somewhere, right, you, you leave a cookie, or anytime you filled out your email. So we're, we're really excited about where we are. And we'll wrap that up, and then I get to, am I still going? Okay. All right, so we'll head into, if there are any other, no other questions, we'll...
When were you starting that marketing?
We'll begin with a tiered approach to marketing, because what we really need to do is, all of us need to be able to answer the questions the same way, with the same responses, whether or not we're in the same room. And we've not done that yet. So we will do that in the next week, and hopefully be able to begin the marketing for the information session, so that we have those answers ready to go. And again, let me take an opportunity to thank Mr. Firdig, Mr. Russell, Mr. Holman, and Mr. McKendrick was here for a little bit, but they noticed a need within the district and embarked upon this voyage, and I wanna thank them for all their hard work. This is, it's not easy to create something out of nothing, and they're doing just that.
Bad news is, the game is tied. Sorry.
No, you're not, but that's okay. Great job.
Mr. Williams.
This is, this is exciting stuff. I mean, and this is, you know, we're looking at, at tons of success from your site, and the ability to bring it out to a whole new population, I think, is, is gonna be welcome news.
Thank you. It's very exciting times over there, and this is another thing that we're very, very excited about, another opportunity for a partnership with Pacific College, with their cybersecurity and early college program. So I wanted to very quickly roll through this, because I know we've kind of scudded with a lot of time tonight. So the objectives tonight are to understand the characteristics of the cybersecurity and early college program, how it's a benefit to all students, high school and adult students in the district, and how the, this, the way the program dovetails with efforts and technology we got to see tonight from Santa Fe Computer Magnet School, some students. So this is definitely, within that, those efforts, the district efforts, understand the funding for it, and, and then ask questions so that you can make an informed decision when, when it comes up for a vote to, to look at the MOU with Pacific College. So it's a dual enrollment class. It would be Monrovia Community Adult School and Pacific College. It's a Saturday course. The course for Pacific College is ISC 100, which is Introduction to Information Technology. That would be a hardware and software class. And the, the goal from this class would be an A-plus certification. I'll show you where it sits on the career ladder in, in terms of information technology. It is only offered for twelve Saturdays, but there's an online component, so students that are in this would need to make sure that they're gonna do some work, that they've got some work to do. So this is a perfect example of a hybrid class. We want to open it up to adults and high school students. It definitely needs to be open to adults, because adult ed is going to be funding it. The class is designed for fifteen, we can have more students depending on the costs. The startup costs are the largest part of it, and the, once that's done, then we've got some licenses, but we're, we might have some students that might have to share some computers, things like that, but the, we'll see if we could go, how far north of fifteen we could go. This course would be the first course in an early college program. It's not as extensive as the program that we've got with the cohort going through MHS right now, but there are other students that might wanna take college courses, especially in this arena. It doesn't, I mean, cybersecurity obviously is in the news every single day, and firms, companies cannot hire people that are qualified fast enough. So this is an exciting first step for people in this arena, and for students that are not necessarily part of the early college cohort, this might be something that gets them excited and gets them going into an early college program. This, we'll see that it leads to an associate degree in cybersecurity, and that associate degree is stackable with a Bachelor of Business Administration from Pacific College, and they're now getting approved for an MBA. So the cybersecurity could lead to a Bachelor of Business Administration, Information Technologies, and then lead to an MBA. So you can see the, the way that this stacks, the two courses are right here, computer software, computer hardware, those two courses are combined in Pacific College's ISC 100. After that, a student would be available, eligible to take the A-plus certification test, and that would get them, you know, decent paying job at, with no college or anything else, just, you know, working at something like a Geek Squad. You go to the next one, cybersecurity and network security, and then you're passing the security plus certification test. And that could lead to, with just those courses, forty to fifty thousand dollar a year job at entry-level job, in, in terms of working with a company doing cybersecurity. As you go through, there's three more level courses for your CASPs, and then finally, finish off, there's four courses that would get you your CISSP. Along with these would be your general education. The program could be completed in a year and a half, it's, it's scheduled, it's designed to complete in eighteen months. And you've seen from the, the Bachelors of Science and Healthcare Administration, Pacific College is not one of these private colleges, we would not have anything to do with an entity like that, but they're not one of these private colleges that comes in and just gouges people. The, they allow, they have, they take financial aid, so you can get Pell Grants, and the, the Bachelors of Science from Pacific College, with our forty-five units from our Allied Health Program, Phys, Pharmacy, Tech, and Medical Assisting, would just gonna cost about twenty thousand, and probably anywhere from eleven to thirteen thousand of that would be Pell Grants. So about seven thousand dollars for a bachelor's degree, and that you get access to similar financial aid this way. So this is an associate degree that you can get finished in a year and a half, it stacks with their bachelor's degree, and, and then puts somebody onto the path. Once you get to that top associate degree, you know, the sky's the limit in terms of getting a job. And those cybersecurity jobs, now you're, you're, you're really in play for a high-paying job in the world of cybersecurity. So that's pretty much, I wanted you to see that. Talking about how this dovetails in, we've got Code to the Future, we have the Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet, we have the NAF Digital Media and Information Pathway, our early college programs, and this, this program just dovetails in with all of those tech efforts. And then the funding is coming from adult ed. The startup cost is about forty-four to forty-five thousand. That's just purchasing the computers that the students are gonna have to take apart, put back together, take apart. The instructor cost is about eleven thousand. Because they're adults, that we, we gotta get an adult in there, and this also addresses AEBG goals, we're able to use funding sources from the adult ed, and we've budgeted accordingly.
Just real quick, the interesting thing about that one-time cost is we've got one-time money for startup programs through the CalWorks funding. And so that funding is not something I could put into the salary schedule or anything, it's, it's not gonna be there next year. And so because of that, we're gonna start a program. So that sounds like, that's a big startup cost, that's to get, once we have that, now we're just looking at the eleven thousand dollar instructor costs for college credits annually, as we continue to put students through this. And that's for all the tools, the technology, we don't wanna use our computers for this, we wanna use the one specific for them, and then there's a lot more in software that comes with that. They completely cover all that, and we will contract with Pacific College from there to pay the instructor, who will not be our employee. So they, we simply say, "Here's the contract, every year, eleven thousand dollars, you pay the teacher, we don't have to worry about benefits, layoffs, anything like that, that's, becomes their teacher. We, our students get the college credit, the certifications, and the opportunity for the pathway, and it's on a Saturday, so it's open to anybody." That's, that's the good news.
So there's a lot of things going on there. So the first thing is, you're talking about a Saturday class, an adult ed class, and having this as part of an early college program. So my, I guess my first question is, is there a cost to the students to attend this?
Not to the high school students, nothing. And high school students can take adult, we could charge adults, but we can't charge high school students per ed code. And so the high school students can come into this for free. What we're hoping, and this is how we get funded for this, if there's a question, how do you do it for free? Once those high school students turn eighteen, and they get those certifications and start the college, we're meeting, as John said, our AEBG goals that adult ed is paid payment points for. And so our monies, or our funding can grow, and our program can grow, by recruiting the high school kids in at the beginning, because when they finish, and they get those certifications, they're now eighteen and can count as adult students. And so there's a method to our madness. We bring them in, and by the time they're done, they're payment for us at the adult school. So this is a program we hope continues to fund itself through the AEBG grants, as they look at payment points and successes that'll come from it. Well, the big thing is, people get hired with these certifications, and for us, it's all about getting jobs. And so because of the high rate of pay, and the high employment rates for people getting this, we feel very good about that.
So are these, is this class, or this series for your students, or the, the high school students as well?
Yes and yes, yes.
So it's open to both parties?
Absolutely.
So when we're saying it's part of the early college program, does that mean that this...
It's not part of the cohort early college program, but this is the, the term that, that Pacific College uses, because their goal is that if this is successful, they would like to offer more courses that are on that pathway, so that more students that are in high school could, could earn those, could earn those early college...
Okay, and that's part of my question. You know, we use the term early college, and I wanna make sure that we're, we're clear on what that means, because...
Correct.
This is early Pacific college credits, meaning... This is early Pacific College credits, meaning that-
It's not the cohort that is going through MHS right now.
Right.
Correct.
It's Citrus, yeah.
Or Citrus, or that it, this would not necessarily be accepted by-
It's high school kids getting college credit, but not through that.
So it's not necessarily going to be accepted by a UC or a state school?
Well, no, they're WASC, they're WASC senior accredited, and part of the MOU, there's a clause that says that it's transferable, would be accepted, but the response was, we can't guarantee that. So it's up to, they're WASC accredited, but each WASC individual, WASC, each individual institution has the, can make the determination as to whether or not that they would-
You can have 60 units from Citrus, and you can go to, for example, Johns Hopkins University, and they may say, that's all elective here, we don't count this, 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 and this, we'll count that, not that. That's exactly what's happening here at Pacific. They'll probably get elective credits for certain things and others if you don't finish the degree through them, but the situation is that they are senior WASC accredited, and those credits are worth somewhere else.
And what we would do is find out whether or not they are approved by the UCs. We'd have to approve this course as we move forward, so that it is a board-approved course, so that they get credit in our schools as well. So this is an overview. The next part is if they, these are transferable units, they would absolutely be part of those à la carte courses for the early college that we've been having.
Something to remember, we're not approving it through Canyon Oaks, Mountain Park, or MHS. We're approving it through adult ed. But you get high school credit for that class offered through adult ed, just like the summer school programs when all the kids in the district come to us for makeup classes. Those are adult ed courses, but they're getting their high school classes made up that way.
And they are also board-approved for-
Correct.
For that high school credit, which is exactly what we'd need to do.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
It'd be dual credit, just so you're aware of that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Dual credit.
And that was item three.
Thank you.
Since somebody jumped the gun.
Great job, guys.
Thank you. Thank you all. Item four, 2017-18 Census Day Enrollment Report. Ms. Wu.
Yes, President Wong. This month's October 4th is our Census Day, which mean that that day's enrollment for District Y will be the, this school year's enrollment day. As you know, that every day enrollment changes, and the kids come to our school and the kids leave the school. So here is the chart, show that in the last seven years, how the district enrollment looks like. As you can tell, that except 2014, our district has 41 more students compared with the year before, due to the self, the self-take over, the students formally go to the county. And except that, each year, the district still experienced decline enrollment, which last year, which up over 200. For this year, compared with last Census Day, we are 51 students down. We checked the number, and we have one more down, which is 51. So on the October 4th, our District Y students is 5,565, five total. And among those students, we will have over 5,229 students in the general ed, and 112 students in the alternative school, which is Canyon and the Mountain Park, as the team just presented a couple minutes earlier, and 208 students enroll in the special ed, which is a little bit higher than last school year, and 16 special kids attend the non-profit schools. So we also showed the 1617, the changes and the varies in the different category. Although our enrollment is less compared with last year, and it did higher than our projection, because we, when we project this year's enrollment, we're projecting conservative due to the severe decline last school years. So the good news is we're 100 students higher compared to our projection, and for the unduplicated student count, because unduplicated counts determine our supplemental concentration funding. So the preliminary number is 59.98, compared with last year, 58.70, we are a little bit higher. And while we continue receiving the students, the mail application for free use mail, we experience that that number may be higher. We project that when school months pass, we probably will a little bit over 60%. Last year's is over 60%. So any question from the board for our school district Census Day enrollment data?
Just a comment. Have we considered the dual immersion and the mandarin increase of students with regards to our expectations for 2017-18?
Yes, we did for our two dual-merging program, Monroe for the Spanish, and Plymouth for the Chinese. Both of these campuses for this school year, we have, we experienced a higher enrollment.
Yeah, because I see you're 5229, but it decreases backwards.
Yes.
But at the same time, understanding there's an increase involved with our students.
Yes. So our five elementary school, only Plymouth and Monroe have an increased enrollment. The other three side is decreased. So we have a net, some campus increase, some campus decrease. This also applied to middle school. Middle school, Clifton, a little bit increased, and Santa Fe has decreased. Of course, the explanation is a bit complicated, because Santa Fe is starting to have the Spanish dual-merging program. There's a possibility those kids originally moved to Santa Fe because of dual-merging program, they may end up enrolled in Clifton.
Thank you.
Could you explain what, unduplicated student count is 59.98%, percent of what? Could you just explain what that is?
Okay, so which mean that among, among the 5,585 students, 59.98 students, they are fit one of this category. For example, if County Wu is first used as well as English learner, or I am also eligible for free use mail, I only can count ones. So I cannot count all of the three. So which mean that 59.98% of all of our 5,565 students, they will qualify either of the three category.
Just-
Yes.
Include it in one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I would like to have something at the next board meeting, just for informational purposes, please. Going back to the 2000 census, following it up with the 2010 census and a projection for the 2020. I'd like to know what the population of Monrovia was. I'd like to know what the population of five-year-olds to 18-year-olds was in both of those categories, and what the projections are for 2020. When we start looking at these numbers, dramatic decrease in the amount of students that we have, it's simply not an answer of, the schools have changed, and therefore, kids have left. That's not probably true. I was quickly going through the census here while this was being demonstrated, and I noticed that there was reduction in the number of people who were actually living in the city of Monrovia from 2000 to 2010. As we look at our property values increasing dramatically over time, it almost dictates that a person of a certain age and an income level is moving in, which is driving the property values up, that does not necessarily mean that they're coming with school-aged children. So it's very possible that we'll see our population decrease over time, have a much more affluent community, and we will be serving a lesser student population than we currently see today. We sit here and we scratch our heads trying to figure out how to get people to come to school, and the answer may be, they're just not there to come. And I'd like to see what that looked like. It just hit me while we were talking, is, let's go back and let history teach us the lesson and see where we are. If you look, so if we could go back and get the historic values for these censuses that have already been completed, and what the projections are, I think it might be a very interesting number to see.
Yeah, sure, we can provide that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, and we'll go to the consent agenda. Our two items of business replaced on the consent agenda have been carefully screened by the members of the staff, and will be act upon board with one motion. Upon request of any person, an item on the consent agenda may be considered separately at its location on the meeting's agenda. Do we have any items to be pulled?
We do not.
Move consent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Item K1, Licensing Agreement Between MyDoc Productions LLC and Monrovia Unified School District. Dr. Kaiser.
Yes, President Board. And Board, it's my pleasure tonight to bring to you the item, the license agreement between MyDoc Productions LLC and Monrovia Unified School District. This item has to do with a special program that is called Screenagers. It is a training program for parents and students regarding the dangers of what is in the internet, its cyber safety for our students, and teaching our students to become very good citizens with their technology. This program, we are looking at the budget implication of being $250 each for the middle schools and the high school, $550. The middle schools are looking to pay for this with their supplemental and concentration funding, as it aligns to our Goal III in our Local Control Accountability Plan. And the high school has received a grant from Healing Connections to fund this program for their school.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board President Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. I'm going to move item four up next, to the reappointment of Loopy Davis as Personnel Commissioner. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have anybody to speak on this? Darvin, would you like to?
Sure, let me introduce it.
Please.
Thank you, Board President Wong. Members of the board, the Board of Education has requested to hold a public hearing regarding the reappointment of our very own Loopy Davis, the board's appointee to the Personnel Commission. Ms. Davis has served as the board's appointee to the Personnel Commission since September 2001. During this time, she has maintained an excellent rapport with the CSEA employee group, as she has visited many of campuses with myself and other members of the Personnel Commission. She is always accessible to my team and the CSEA membership to address issues, but also to celebrate successes. Above all else, she has served the district with compassion, kindness, and care. And it's for these reasons that at the close of the public hearing, I'm asking the board to appoint Ms. Davis to the Personnel Commission for a three-year term beginning December 1st, 2017.
Thank you. Do I have any comments to the public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Huff, can you call for a vote, please?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board President Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much for your service. It's greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to give a term.
Sorry to keep you so long.
Maybe a year longer.
All righty, back to item number two, Memo of Understanding Between Hazleton Betty Ford Foundation and the Monrovia Unified School District. Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, President Wong and Board, a few meetings ago, we, you approved the Building Assets Reducing Risk Program for the high school that is part of a large federal grant. And the Hazleton Betty Ford Foundation is one of the groups that works with the group that is working with our high school students presently. They were very impressed with the work that is happening at the high school, and they contacted us and said that they could take on our middle schools also. So this year would be a planning year for next year, for us to have the Building Assets Reducing Risk, also known as the BAR program in both of our middle schools. This program, the cost to the foundation to provide this for our district would be around $200,000 of service, and the approximate indirect cost for our sites would be around $5,000, and that would be paid for out of Goal III of our Local Control Accountability Plan, the supplemental and concentration funds. And so we're requesting tonight that we approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the Hazleton Betty Ford Foundation.
Thank you. Do I have any, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kaiser, for bringing this to the district. Item three, Human Resources, Variable Term Waiver Request. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, Board President Wong, members of the board, the Board of Education has requested to approve the Variable Term Waiver Request for the 2017-2018 school year on behalf of Daniel Chacon and Anthony Flucker. In cases where designated subjects and/or career technical education credential holder is required to hold a specially-designed academic instruction delivered in English authorization, but does not yet hold this authorization, is not able to obtain an Emergency Cross-Cultural Language and Academic Development Certificate, it is necessary to request a Variable Term Waiver. In other words, this will allow these two individuals to be able to provide instruction to our English language learners. Both of the reference teachers are currently in a career technical educational program to clear their credentials, and will have earned their full SADI English learner authorization upon issuance of the clear credentials anticipated in August 2018. As such, it is recommended that these Variable Term Waivers requests be approved to provide the time necessary for the teachers to earn their full English learner authorizations.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Comments or questions? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board President Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Item five, Public Hearing and Approval of the CSEA District Joint Initial Proposal of Topics for the 2017-18 Negotiations. Dr. Jackson, would you like to open this up, please?
Yes, Board, President Wong, members of the board, the Board of Education has requested to hold a public hearing on the Joint Initial Proposal of Topics for modification of the current CSEA District Collective Bargaining Agreement, and approve the Joint Initial Proposal for 2017-2018. Pursuant to government code, the Joint Initial Proposal identifying topics to be addressed in negotiations was published at the October 11, 2017 board meeting, and is now presented to the public for comment. Following the public hearing, it is appropriate for the Board of Education to take official action to approve the proposed topics for negotiation. It should be noted, the topics for negotiations are not listed in order of importance. However, members of the team are well aware and working collaboratively with the district to identify viable ways to balance our multi-year budget as it is showing a current deficit in the third year. This is the most important topic, as we are required to submit a balanced budget by December 20, December 15, 2017.
Thank you. Do I have any comments from the public on this topic? Hearing or in seeing none, I am going to close the hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board President Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Item six, Public Hearing and Approval of MTA District Joint Initial Proposal for the Topics of 2017-18 Negotiations. Dr. Jackson, would you like to open this hearing, please?
Yes. Board President Wong, members of the board, the Board of Education has requested to hold a public hearing on the Joint Initial Proposal of Topics for modification of the current MTA District Collective Bargaining Agreement, and to approve the Joint Initial Proposal for the 2017-2018 Negotiations. proposal for the two thousand seventeen, twenty eighteen negotiations. Pursuant to government code, the joint initial proposal identifying topics to be addressed in negotiations was published at the October eleventh, two thousand and seventeen board meeting, and is now presented to the public for comment. Following, following the public hearing, it is appropriate for the Board of Education to take official action to approve the proposed topics for negotiation. I would like to note as well, in working with MTA, the topics for negotiation are not listed in order of importance. However, members of the team are well aware and working collaboratively with the district to identify viable ways to balance our multi-year budget, as it is showing a deficit in the third year. This is, as indicated in the previous item, the most important topic, as we are required to submit a balanced budget by December fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public regarding this topic? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Comments or questions from the board? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Item seven, Pending Board Issues. Dr. Throsing?
President Wong, I have nothing to add to the report as listed. We are following our, our plans.
Perfect. Does the board have any additions or subtractions? Give us time, we'll help you. Onto item L, Old Business. Wednesday, November the eighth, will be the next board meeting. It will be joint with Personnel Commission on the thirteenth. It'll be a joint meeting with the city. And on December the thirteenth, will be our regular board meeting. Under New Business, we have a number of items going on in the district through the month of November. Please take a look at our website, and you can see them all. The board will be doing some school visits on November the third to Mayflower, December the eighth to Plumbeth. And with that, we are going to adjourn the regular Board of Education Open Session Meeting. But before we do so, unfortunately, we have a, a couple of, of people to, to honor. The first is Bill McCray. Bill is the father of performing arts staff member Julia Clegg. Services for Mr. McClary will be held later this week. The second is Beverly Haynes, and Mr. Williams is gonna speak briefly.
Thank you, Board President Wong. I would like to speak about the likes and legacy of Beverly Haynes. She was the vice president of the Monrovia Dworty Black Alumni Association for many years. And she participated in various committees. She planned various fundraising efforts. Those efforts included the annual scholarship gala. I understand they had eight to ten scholarships recipients. Her activity with the Black History Month, where she assisted the late Jonah Yule in such a positive way. Her annual picnic and grandparents' day, which she did at my church, Second Baptist, for years. She did most of the purchasing of the supplies for all the events that the Black Dworty Alumni Association had. You can see her working just tireless, and where she used to serve foods in a capacity where she is needed. She was married for over fifty years to Mr. Frank Haynes. And Ms. Haynes was just a wonderful human being. Her death was a shock to several of us. She had a wonderful spirit. She reminded me of a lot of the people at my home in Dallas. Because of her directness, she had me on a toe, I mean, twirled around her finger. She really did. And I'll truly miss her. Her viewing is Friday at Douglas and Zook, and understanding her service will be at the Methodist Church in Lebanon on Saturday. And so I just wanna commend her for the work she's done. Despite her being a resident of Dworty, she spends most of her time in Monrovia. And so kudos to her family, and the legacy and the foundation that she left on their behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Unfortunately, Pat Myers also passed away, and Mr. Hammond would like to say a word or two.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Pat Myers is an institution in the city of Monrovia. But what most people didn't know was that Pat was the first woman elected to the school board. And this was in the late, early nineteen seventies. And when you're blessed with a really long life, and Pat passed away at ninety years old, is that the people who are in charge, or people in the spots, don't even know who the people were that were there so many decades ago. But the, Pat has left an indelible mark on our community in so many different areas. And it was an honor to be her friend. It was an honor to have been associated with her, and so many of the things, that she was so progressive in what it is that she tried to accomplish in our community. In fact, she was the very first lady who ever held the position of the school board president in, in the Monrovia Unified School District. She has been laid to rest, and she now has joined her husband. And we thank you, Pat, for everything that you did for us, and the legacy that you left.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn.